You ready, Robert? Okay.
Tom, I want to check to see if my audio is working.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Copies of partial files on there, please. Copies of draft minutes of meeting November seventh nineteen twenty first and twenty sixth. And they're posted on the city website. Copies of committee's reports have been posted on the city website. Communications and our regular reports from the police department. So we'll get right into department reports. And let's actually have fire first, since there's, I'm sure, will be things relatively quick.
Thirty-two calls for the month of November. There was two struck or fired, one was mutually report. And the other was a port fire up on Colby Street. Three motor vehicle accidents. One natural gas leak. And one authorized burn. Then there was eight good intentions. Seventeen false alarms or unintentional trips of the alarm. For that total of thirty-two. Just a note, I'm in both others waiting for some small little computer chip. And we should probably see that in the next couple of weeks. Cool. That's really the only thing holding it up right now.
Any questions from council members?
Yes, and you said there were two accidents?
Two big ones, yeah.
And do you remember what streets were?
There was one on Green Fairview, right at the intersection by St. George's. And I think the other one was that had a bit of Columbia, a bit of State.
Oh, was that by the library?
By the library, yeah.
Because there was, I think I was there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, well, there was, there was no injuries or minor injuries in both accidents.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Governor.
With the new, with the new law, is there any tickets issued for unauthorized? Was there any tickets issued?
No, not for that one. It was, it was a rental property and it weren't there anymore. They already left. This, it was Empire pit, but it was just like the Embers smothering. But we really had to pay even contact really.
No, but normally do they get issued a ticket?
Uh, like, man, it really depends. We try to like educate them, you know, first, you know, I know it's like the law. You know, we have to have like the sole skills and no actual like fires right now. We'll try to be, you know, a little lenient with it, try to educate them. But if it's like it turns to be an ongoing thing, then yeah, we haven't ruled their problems in any. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator, counsel. Public. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next up, the department.
Hello. This is my hour. Um, so we'll just jump right in. We had a lot of fun programming this past month. One of the main highlights for all of the age groups was a little fall festival. I told you guys about what's coming up, a parent came in, cooked a meal for kindergarten through senior at our program. So kindergarten is kindergarten second came over to the youth center, had a nice celebration with us. Played a lot of games, had some events and a nice meal. We also got to go see Moana two, a little private screening at Spotlight Cinema when it came out. We got some discounted tickets and included popcorn and lemonade. They really enjoyed that. And they were fun, we decided to see what happens next month for those kids. They're great, as I said, they were at the fall festivals as well. One of the highlights for programming for this past month was a young member of the community who is part of our YDPL program reached out to us and wanted to volunteer to teach the kid skateboarding as part of this community service. So a couple of days away, we took four or five kids over to Oakdale to do skateboarding with him. It was really great to watch him play row as a teacher. Yeah, he was, he was only, I think, like thirteen, and he was still taking the time to really nurture these kids and their interests and did a great job encouraging and not letting me get frustrated. Because I don't know how many of you have stood on skateboard and tried to move around. It's not as easy as they make it look. But that was really great programming. He'll also come back with us in the spring, so hopefully bring that back. All the same programming as usual, Vindelstev, Arsko, Colby County, Sylvia Center, and the debate club continued. One of our recintendents who is in cosmetology came in and taught kids how to make sugar scrubs. You know, from all those ingredients you can get at the grocery store, they kind of have a lot of fun doing body and lips scrubs and are looking to learn more skills from her in that area. There's some facilities. Very fast. Team programming, they got to participate in the home cooked meal as well. Not only by benefiting by eating it, but they were there the night before and they helped prep. I don't know how much, you know how much goes into a Thanksgiving dinner. This was a Thanksgiving dinner essentially for a hundred people. So the night before there was a lot of crap, a lot potato peeling, guys was ready in the kitchen. And the teams helped with that. And so they saw the hard work that goes into a meal like that, which was really cool. And then they've also just been utilizing the gym, they have a little ping pong tournament and we're hoping to bring some more programming to the team. Thanks a lot. The numbers for registration and attendance are here. They're pretty on track with what they've been the past couple of years. You know, as we said, it's a rolling registrations of kids that will continue to register throughout the entire school year. And we're about the same as we were at this time last year, so. So the next section, with the budget season, there seem to be a lot of questions about the budget, where the money was going, why there was so much money going into our department in general. One of the things that I worked with Heather and the BEA on when I first started was kind of trying to be really transparent about the budget adding on. You know, there's a lot of different lines, it was just materials supplies and it was just maintenance of buildings. So we kind of parse that out so you could see what was going into youth center, what's going into Oakdale Park, all of that. Just to be as clear as we can with where everything's going. So with the budget this year, I just wanted to talk about it. You know, there weren't, there were very few increases, there were only two increases for a lot of this year. Eight of our lines actually decreased and they don't stay exactly the same. Though the lines have increased, we have personal services, which is always going to increase. There's contractual raises every single year, inflation every single year, everybody's personal services line is going to go up every year. That's unavoidable. The other one that went up was our meal service line, which is a contract we have with the Columbia County Recovery Kitchen. And so that was budgeted for most amount of meals we think we'll buy, we'll like to come in under budget for that. Because as we, you know, go for our slow season, we get fewer meals. We've also submitted paperwork to be reimbursed by the state for portion of that line as well. So we're hoping that that will get reimbursed. The report is pretty comprehensive. I kind of broke down everything in terms of what's coming from the city, what's coming from our supporters. So personal services is always going to be the largest line. There are some roles in the department that are not limited to services, like the secretary, the cleaner. And there are some that just do, you know, summer camp are just do after school. But there's also a lot of personal lines that are covered by mostly FOKI, but also the county reimburses us for some of our camp out there as well. So this just kind of goes through. I think a lot of people forget that we also manage Oakdale Park, which is, you know, the largest park in the city. We're not just maintaining the building, we're maintaining the grounds, we're maintaining the beach run, we're paying for the lifeguards, we're paying for the lifeguard training. And again, a lot of that is supported by Friends of Hudson Youth. So if you go through this, I won't read through everything with you right now, because we would be here for the rest of this meeting, another hour. Going through this, I hope that you will take the time for reading. Public as well, obviously it's online on the city website, so everybody can access it. It breaks it down with the actual line that I'm getting out of from the budget. So you can see a large reference, the city budget, you can pull those lines out and it kind of breaks down what that all those for, of course. A couple of things that I did just want to talk about is on the last line, the last page here. So there is a line about revenue, if you go back to the top. So revenue, obviously, we're never going to be the largest revenue provider in the city of Hudson, but it is something that we think about constantly with the things we're offering. We have increased the revenue since Calvin and I stopped the rules. We're working to make sure that that is something that we take into consideration for offering these services. Some revenue for the city. There's a lot of, you know, we redid the rental fees for the youth center, which were incredibly low compared to other places that you could rent. And we increased those to be more comparable to other organs, other places you could rent. And that does bring in some money for us and it continues to increase each year. And then just this page here with the outside sources. So Friends of Hudson Youth is the largest contributor. We also already get a fair amount of money from Columbia specifically for transportation for our Oakdale summer camp. And the city Hudson School District, while they don't give us a natural monetary contribution, they do give us a lot of free services. So the space that we use for our sports programs, they, you had just free of charge, none of them qualify for free of charge. They hold four classrooms, a cafeteria and a gym for us for six weeks for summer camp. Whether we use it or not, they hold it so that nobody else can use it. That's about almost nineteen thousand dollars that they would charge us if we were paying for that space. So, you know, we are looking to, we are looking to outside, get outside resources for that. But as a closing thought about this, I do want to say the citizens of Hudson made a decision to invest in the youth of our community when they over, when they took over the Boys and Girls Club and created the Department of Youth. The community prioritized supporting, protecting and enriching the lives of the children for the greater Hudson area because they still value and importance. That's still a mission of the department today. We're fortunate that we have the partners that we do that recognize the value of what we're doing and want us to person that. And I'm hoping that you guys can all have your main points of view as well. And again, give me that to us in any of those ways, and you give up the name of that.
Okay, your first question from the council is Jennifer online. Jen?
Hi, can you hear me, guys?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I said, great. Liz, thank you so much for this breakdown. It just proves, it just proves how much you care and want us to understand everything that's going on. You always do a great report every week. I wanted to ask, how many people youth, the youth department employs?
I'm sorry, can you ask again?
I'm going to hear the figure one.
How many do we employ? So right now, we can't have. Sorry, it was off the count. I think we have about fifteen permanent part-time employees right now and seven or eight full-time employees.
And of those people, how many are unionized?
All of the full-time, non-supervisor roles, so everybody's a full-time except for Calvin and I are in the union. And all of the permanent part-time employees have the option of joining the union. And they're all obviously benefiting and protected by the union whether they join or not.
That's great. So you, you're providing jobs for the community and you're also providing a service that we don't have in Hudson, which is kind of a parks department when it comes to Oakdale. The biggest of your breakdown here, the biggest draw is, is for personnel. And I just wanted to note that. And I think it's, it's good that you're paying a fair wage and possibly providing benefits to people.
Yeah, and in the summer we have
So thanks again.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. And in the summer, when we are managing that park, when we are running the camp, we have about at least thirty more employees going through the bike shop, the lifeguards and all of the counselors we bring in. So it's, it's a pretty large personnel and necessary for the services we offer, so thank you.
Is that it, Jen?
And they all, they all receive training?
Yes, yeah, extensive training, especially for summer camp.
Which is also an expense. So that's great. I appreciate you, Liz.
Thank you.
Is that it, Jen?
That's it.
Okay, okay, thank you. Vicki?
Yes, you did a great job explaining the figures here. I'm going to be forwarding this to the supervisors as we discussed prior. And that way you can, instead of me connecting you, you can connect directly and see if we can get increased funding from the county. But the way I see it, it's your budget was around eight hundred thousand. Then we have minus the two hundred of, between a hundred fifty of the Friends of Hudson, fifty-six of our county, twenty-four of the city of the school district, nine of the grand. So that, okay. And then minus also, we're going to have to take out the Oakdale. So you merely, your budget is more on the six hundreds if you take out the, right?
I think the city, the Columbia one is the one that doesn't fit it. So I think it's more like seven.
Okay.
When that comes out, yeah. But, and then the reimbursements and hopefully.
Yes, and so if we can get any more profit, increase the revenue from the county about a deal.
And as it says in the report too, we're always reaching back out to those organizations and to the county and in county conversations. So. Great job, thank you.
And I have a councilman, Governor.
Liz, with this skateboard program, does it really have any youth do that? But did they touch on the importance of helmet safety, the difference between a skateboard helmet and a white helmet? Did they touch on that?
Yeah, they talked about that, everybody had a little pad, knee pads and skateboard helmets on.
Did they talk about what a TBI is?
Probably not, I wasn't at the first few sessions, you know. But our staff has trained in that, so the staff that go and support have that training, so if anything does happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bridge, sorry. That's a good, um, what is the, so you maintain Oakdale Park, but what's the, is there like an overlap between what the youth department and what GPW maintains or?
Not really. We bring the trash to the shed, they can pick up the trash at the sheds for us, just like at the youth center. Occasionally I'll call them in for like, like they help cut up a tree that fell down, you know, that kind of stuff. But it's, the rest of it is enough.
The grids that you guys fixed though, that was something your responsibilities to take over and organize a person from.
That was funded by a friend of Hudson, but they had an outside person come in and build that.
But you kind of overlooked how it happened.
Margaret's got a question. Oh, sorry, Margaret?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I want to go back to Vicki's first comment about the various revenue sources and that that would be taken off of the eight hundred approximately that's in the youth department budget. That was not my understanding of how the budget worked last year. If you look at the original proposed budget for 2024 and then the adjusted, which reflects the Friends of Hudson Youth and other revenues, it went from eight hundred to over nine hundred thousand. So Liz, can you clarify whether or not the monies that you're reporting here as coming from Friends of Hudson Youth and so forth will go directly against the eight hundred thousand that the city has budgeted or is that separate?
The Friends of Hudson Youth is the separate one, like I said to Vicki, that one is on top of, that's not taken out of.
Yes, you correct me.
Okay, so the only thing that comes back in really is monies for things like food, is that correct?
And county money, county money goes in, like the reimbursement that we get for the personnel for the camp.
And the school.
The school is non, like, it's not, it's comp.
I think, I think the school contribution is contribution in kind.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And given that, given that the youth department's position is that all children in the school district can use the youth department, the least the school can do is actually provide facilities for their own students. It's not exactly generous.
Anything else, Margaret?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? From the public? Liz, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, ladies. Next up is Senator, I don't think you need to see yourself, Chief. Steve Frymer.
Hello, everyone.
Hello. Do you have Karen, do you?
No, I came from the school and assisted coaching for the girls' basketball team. So I left that out of the scores, not the ice coaching. So, good evening, everyone. For our body worn camera reports, there were no reports or no videos that indicated need of training. And for the month of November, we had a youth support incident. I think everyone in the council is familiar with what that was. So moving on, we have sixteen arrests for seventeen total charges, nine emotionally disturbed person calls and calls involving a drug overdose or suspected drug overdose were zero. There was one reported pedestrian versus car accident at State and Carroll. However, both pedestrian and the vehicle left when we went to go report it. So we got a third party call that someone bumped by a car and when we went, they were both gone. I do want to also point out, I know it's the last meeting informal for this year. So I wanted to say thank you to the council, President DPHO for the support for the police department and especially the K-9 program. We have had since May twenty-two K-9 deployments, which just means that we have been requested to appear at certain events, not just within the city, but within the county. Particularly, one of the most recent was when Steve Walsh passed away from Greenport Rescue Squad and we were asked by the crisis team to respond with rigs. And he did an awesome job and it was very beneficial. And so I just want to say thank you for that.
Can you comment at all on any interesting news?
The only thing I can say that is what the press release said, and it is confirmed that it's human remains.
They just stated so that people might not be aware.
I had no idea what this is.
Oh, yes, so this morning, we received a call at about eleven eighteen AM from New York State Police Poughkeepsie. There's a survey team, I believe it's for the Mill Street project down there. They were surveying and they found it was off the bike, or off the Empire Trail, maybe to the right fifty-ish feet, hundred fifty to one hundred feet in a wooded area. So that's all I can say.
So they're going to start an investigation?
Yes, we already have state police, assistar detectives, BCI and FIU to gather all of the remains and we'll be moving forward with that investigation.
Any idea how long the vials been there?
No, there was, I mean, it was just bones. So it's been some time.
Any other questions from council members about that or about that?
Chief, so with the new heating center, cooling, you know, heating center open up, how's, how's it doing with calls of service at that location?
It's, they're down, we're minimal right now. We don't get very many calls to the warning center. They try to kind of keep us out of it unless, unless absolutely necessary. But we are also able to go in and do walk-throughs and talk to staff.
Anyone else in council? Anyone else in the public? Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Next up is Robert Perry, who is on line.
Alrighty. So peaceful. I just want to break out in the song. Septus revenue for October was fifty-four thousand four hundred thirty dollars. Right now, we're on pace to exceed our, our goal, our revenue goal for the year by about seventy-five thousand dollars. So we November and December hold to average. The, the three, we do have three projects that are currently under review for sewer extensions because they have actually made their monetary permits for the cost of fees. That's the Mill Street loss, the seventy-three, seven thirty-five Columbia, which is the old TJ's, I believe, and the pocketbook factory. As far as the, the fifty-eight million dollar bill, which is the bilateral infrastructure, the stormwater separation project. Right now, survey continues. You'll see survey crews mostly on Columbia Street between Front and Seventh, as well as Long Alley and Prison Alley in the same, in the same area. We've got another, this should be finished up around April, May of twenty twenty-five. We'll start design then with the expectation that this bin for the first half will go out this time next year for a, for a spring twenty twenty-six construction. The water. So I don't know, how many of you are familiar that we have a reservoir, that you know where it is, that you know that there's a road that goes by it? There is a little squiggly, scraggly dirt road that really, that runs along the side of it. There's been communications between the city and the town of Taconic, well, at least over the past fifteen years. I know I bet a dozen, never really got that far, but now Taconic is kind of abandoning roads that they don't really use. And so one of the roads is the Reservoir Road, that's between the Taconic Church down road and County Route twenty-seven. The city owns a hundred percent on either side of it. There is no need for anybody who's not on city business to take that road. We've had issues with people, you know, defecating and all sorts of sort of things along the side of it. And, you know, because it's kind of a very little traffic. So now we've put, we put road closed signs up. These are temporary, what'll happen is once we finish our discussions with the local fire departments as to how they would like to have access, we'll be putting permanent gates up with keys or whatever the system is for the fire departments. We'll do have some assets there, the house and a chemical feed bin. But this is something that, you know, it was probably about fifteen years in the working, you know, from time to time, and I'm glad it's finally come to a resolution. So I appreciate the, the board and the highway superintendent and Taconic giving us their support. The, we had a water break on Fourth and Columbia last week. And so what happened is there was a number of utility conflicts. So Premier, rather than pothole to locate all of their, the natural gas utilities, just did the excavation for us. One of the things they found was an abandoned wooden water bane, come across those. So it was what left is the truck is the premier vac truck, about a million and a half dollar piece of equipment. And our trailer with our sleeves and equipment, our excavator, who was needed, was also there. So we, we had a crew with them as well. The break was found and it's a classic crack. Now, you'd usually see this extremely cold temperatures, but either way, sleeve went around it and it was all put back together. So there is, this is kind of a tricky thing that would probably require a couple more discussions. But so if you're up at the old former Van Cleek's and behind Speedway Garage, there is a long alley, which the city street runs along the south side of that building. And there's a little curb cut with an entranceway that accesses the alley. Except the curb cut and the, the property goes over is actually privately owned by the property owner of the building. Right now, it's Calvin, but when Van Cleek owned it, Van Cleek owned both parcels. So, so that would just city vehicles and the public go over private property to access the alley. The question, the request from the current owner was about establishing an easement. So that way, that would be kind of formalized, the people going over the property. And so one of the things that came out in discussion is, well, maybe one step further, instead of an easement, you do a property line adjustment and swap out what the current opening is, which is down here, we would take the property to the left, which would be the new. We would take the property to the left, which would be the new entrance to the alley. They would get this, where the G is. And this area that's at the hashes is actually the site of a former spill. A spill is when a tank was discovered underground, discovered a leak, because in the city's alley, it was deemed to be the responsibility of the city by New York State Environmental Conservation Law. So, we spent about twenty-five thousand dollars removing tanks and, and fluid and cleaning the site. It would be the understanding that if, if we gave them that alley that we don't use, it's a section alley that continues to Speedway, that the city hasn't used in about fifty years, you know, that they would assume any potential liability from the, the closed spill. So, anyway, that's kind of an overview. Bring it up, discussion. This is, you know, this is the spill that was called in in two thousand and five, and see later that year, it was closed by the department, so. That's that. Moving on to more DPW season work, you know, grabbing, you know, leaves as, as they keep coming in, putting the lights in the trees, of course, for the holiday season, and we'll leave those on until the brings a nice little, you know, nice little glow to Warren Street in the early, in the early nights. The, before the Sanas Village went up, there was a group of volunteers that came and worked on this one. It was originally called an ornament or a chandelier by the original builder. They tightened it up a little bit. That was put out in the park. You know, more DPW, just building signs, you know, at this point, we're not mowing lawns, so we do a lot of maintenance and a lot of, you know, woodworking and build things that we've used and resources and supplies went depleted over the year, built them up. This is, you know, the ancient electrical equipment in the Seventh Street Park, and we were trying to piece this together to get power for some of the houses, Sanas Village. Streetlights, you know, we used to have national grid, replace the outlets. Now that we own all the electrical infrastructure for the streetlights, we have city electrician in to replace those. Next week, you'll see a, a boring truck down with Waterfront Park. That's the Waterfront Advisory Group. They have a contractor who's gonna be doing some samples. Some are metal, some of them are for, you know, find out what the compaction is to the soil, different tests. So, you'll see about ten of them around Rick's Point in and around it. That's Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of next week. Moving on to the streetscape, you know, new catch bases put in as far as the streetscape. Here's explanations for the new curbing. As part of the bridge project, this was a tapping sleeve for the new connection of the new water main to the existing main on Street to replace the one that was abandoned by the city about twenty-five years ago. And so, after the, it was tapped, this is where the water main had to go to get towards the bridge. And then you've got a left conduit, you've got gas mains, there's a drain, a stream drain. This was the decking on the bridge, all the rebar put together, close up of, it's, yeah. You know, it seems like it's not really sophisticated, but the bar are literally put down in a lattice form, and there's guys with, basically, these are industrial strength twistums that you'd have on your garbage bag. And that's what's holding all of the steel together for that deck. And, and the chemical, or a concrete truck, pump truck comes in, the dump trucks load into it, and it basically pumps it up and over. The north deck was bored. We ran out of time with the holiday, Amtrak wouldn't allow any work the week of Thanksgiving, and after that, the weather hasn't really cooperated. So, looks like we're pretty much tabled until next spring. And just more ADA work is up Seventh and Union. You'll see in new sections of sidewalk and some ADA pads put in, and.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions from council members? Rob, I noticed the poll went into the radar sign on Worth Avenue.
I believe the sign was put up today.
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
I didn't see you. You're driving too fast. If you didn't see, it was driving you, driving you.
Is it the, is it the battery operated?
Solar.
No, solar. I don't think it was working very well, because there's not much sun out there today.
Yeah, after, I think it takes about maybe a few weeks in order to warm up, and then it works very well, because we have that on the plan with. Mr. Perry, did you mind recharging the battery on the battery operated one?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I spoke with an informant. He, he picked it up today. He's gonna charge it.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from anyone else in the community? Okay, thanks again, Rob.
Thank you. It was a pleasure.
Wow, good experience. Okay, that's it for presentations. We will go through some resolutions. Can I, the first resolution? Got it, though?
What, what is that?
First one, the budget commissioners, please. Can I get an introduction and a second? Trishah and Alon. The second resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding accepting donations from January to December twenty twenty-five from the Friends of Hudson Youth, the youth department. We've done this every year since the youth department has been existed, I mean, since the Friends of Hudson Youth have been existed. Do I, and Trishah? The third authorized acceptance of donations to the New York City Garden.
Senior.
Did you?
Senior.
Senior center.
No, I'm frustrated. I'm sorry.
That must be new, because I didn't, I didn't see that when I looked earlier from that.
Introduction and a second? Trishah and Alon. Then, and, uh, the resolution accepting donations from the senior center from. Let's see. Anyone? Trishah? Which? And lastly, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a lease agreement between the city and the Pocket Book Factory for their section of the lot. As you recall, we originally had a resolution that everybody wanted a little bit more money, and we are getting a little bit more money, according to the legislature.
So, there is a.
One more time. Let's get an introduction and a second first. Go ahead, Ricky.
There is a mistake here, because first, it says, the resolution says it's one year, and actually, the lease, it says it's five years. So, that is a problem. We have to change it.
Oh, the attached lease, if I may?
Yeah, so the lease goes from twenty-four from.
Yeah, we'll fix that.
And so, the increase is only for five hundred dollars? It's one thousand? No, it was five hundred.
It, we, it went up. I'm gonna jump in on this. I'm sorry. It was a five hundred dollar difference, and I do apologize. It looks like some of the, the changes in my lease didn't carry over when I uploaded this. So, the lease amount should be for thirteen thousand dollars. It was a five hundred dollar difference between what the, the council, it was a five hundred. No, sorry, I'm gonna start this again. It's a thousand dollar increase from last year. The council wanted to go up a little bit higher than that, and we ended at the thirteen thousand. And then it is for a one-year lease, and I do apologize. I'll have those changes made over to the lease agreement before the formal meeting.
Okay. Okay, so you tried to negotiate to go higher, but you, you weren't able to, is that it?
We did, yeah.
Yeah, but only.
It did, it did go higher. It, it did go higher. It just didn't go as high as the council had wanted it to be.
I think in the executive meeting, we had it high. You don't remember?
I thought this was what the council asked for.
It wasn't only five hundred, but.
Okay.
No, there was, it, it, they came in at five hundred less. They did come in at five hundred less, but still five hundred, but still more than what the original, what they wanted to pay on it.
I think the big sticking point was the term, so we, we did get the one-year term. It was, it was a larger term, and I think we wanted the one-year term, correct?
Yes.
Right, yeah. And what, what parcel exactly is it just? You have a section, if you go over to the parking lot north of the firehouse, the, the fenced-in section.
So, it's still not just that?
Just that. Okay, moving right along. There are two local laws.
And what's this kind of, is that the rest of the parking lot, so?
There is, there's nothing right now. What do you mean, status?
I mean, there's nothing, there's, it's just a parking lot for the.
It's not even, yeah, it's not really a official parking lot yet.
It's some modded area.
Yeah. So, there are two local laws, and locally passed through the legal committee. And I need an introduction and a second for the first one, related to child daycare facilities. Is there an introduction and a second? Alon and Trishah. And the second one has to do with interference with city offices for city employees. Do I have an introduction and a second? Logan and Trishah.
Tom, can you go back to the childcare law?
Sure.
And Logan, can you scroll down to the definitions on the second page? That's it, thank you. Yeah, I wanted to get, check to lead examples. That's all.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, can, can Margaret, maybe, can you explain to me? I think we had a conversation about the child daycare. So, a small, like, if somebody has two kids, is that, is that included on the law?
Yes, it is. So, one of the things, one of the things that we did in the previous iteration of this, there was, they're called legally exempt. There was no reference to allowing for, it's really pretty much informal in-home daycare for up to three children, usually infants, sometimes somebody with special needs and so forth. And one of the things we did was amend this to make sure that we covered that sort of daycare as well. The other thing we discussed in legal committee was whether or not the larger, the licensed daycares, the child daycare facilities, that the state licenses, whether that should be limited to R three and a, like, R three and then everything that comes after it. The discussion in the legal committee was that there was a preference for leaving it at R one, which essentially means that pretty much anywhere in the city, you could have a licensed sticker.
Thank you, Margaret. Before we wrap this up, important announcement. Next week, on the sixteenth, next Monday, is the last visioning session of the comprehensive planning group called Hudson Twenty Thirty Five. It's a drop-in event, although you have to commit yourself to it. There'll be no, you know, times, there'll be no speeches to speak of. And it's any time during five thirty, seven thirty. It's at the Spark Building on Five Hundred Union, which is also a corner of South Fifth Street. Food and, food and refreshments will be served, there'll be activities for children. You don't have to sign up. You can just drop in. And, you know, hear all the updates on the comprehensive planning process, and you get to share your thoughts about that little process. So, please stop it up. This is one of the last public input sessions. There'll be more. The company, the group doing this comprehensive plan will be speaking to us in the future a number of times, but this is one of the few chances left to be part of the process itself. And that's it. Anybody from the council having anything to add?
I, I have a question regarding the, the protection with the city officials.
Oh, well, Margaret can address that, I believe, from the street or the court or, or, Crystal, since they worked on it in the legal committee.
So, this may just be my ignorance, but do I understand it correctly that if I'm requested to support a police officer in arrest or in some public disturbance, I have responsibility to assist them?
First, hold on.
Well, hold on, I'm, that might have been, are you looking at the subdivision, A, the interference prohibited section?
I don't have it in front of me. I mean, I, I went based on that, and you did a little further research to understand that, but it does sound as if.
Sorry, I, I think it would be helpful, Logan, if you would pull the law up, so that people can see what Gary is talking about.
So, you're talking, so the section, inter, section A is the interference prohibited. This was already in the city code. It's not something new or that was added in with the amendment. It's just a carryover. We've added subsection B to it. So, where you're looking at interference prohibited, it talks about the fact that no person shall hinder, obstruct, or interfere with any city officer in the performance, performance of their duties, nor shall any person willfully refuse or neglect to assist any city officer when lawfully called upon him to do so. So, I would say there is a, there can be a duty, provided the duty is required by law, if that makes sense. So, it's not just a city officer, as a city officer, you can't turn around to someone and say, "You have to help me with this file, these file materials to my car," and this law makes you lawfully obligated to do so. In, it would be more that you, there would have to be a legal requirement, a lawful, like, a police officer asking you to step aside or provide information with respect to something. That would be something that you may have to lawfully respond to. They have, they, they are lawfully allowed to request that of you. So, there are limitations to this, but I haven't gotten into, you know, the reasoning for this in the city code, because it was pre-existing. So, I'm not sure why, you know, the basis for this part of the law to begin with.
Yeah, I, yeah, that seemed to be my sense of it as well. But it, it is, it, it does seem a little very gray.
It's written broadly. I'm assuming that there was a reason to have it put in in the first place, whether it's a situation that came up with like a DPW situation with someone having to, I'm trying to think about this, like, access property or something to that effect. But I haven't dug into what, you know, what circumstances caused this to be put into the books.
See, I interpret that as like a witness, like, if you're a witness to something, and the officer says, "You need to stay here, because you're a witness, and you need to stay. You don't leave." That's the way I interpret something like that.
I'm just looking through the rest of it now. I see that it's talking about subpoenas, orders of process, making it arrest. Again, I would have to, I would have to dig into that, that one a little bit further to see. We'd be looking at specific situations. I mean, we would be looking at this on a case-by-case scenario to see if it applies.
Thank you.
I, I don't know if Chief Franklin is still there, or if she has left.
No, no.
Sorry?
So, Gary, we don't get handcuffs?
Well, I don't get a bad G, you know, so.
I'm sorry, is Chief Franklin still there?
No.
Okay, thank you. So, one of the things, when we were looking at this in the legal committee, we did modify some of the original language. There was fairly kind of vague language around annoying city employees and so forth. And one thing that we did discuss at length was that it is not the intent of this language to, in any way, interfere with free speech. But the, Crystal made a decision not to explicitly discuss that. We had talked about potentially putting that in here. I don't know, Crystal, if you want to speak to that. But the other issue that came up, and I think before we vote on this, I'd like to get Chief Franklin's take on it, was why do we need this if it's all, if there's already New York State law? So, Crystal, if you could just cover why this was. So Crystal, if you could just cover why this was necessary? And anything else that you want to add to the conversation?
Well, the law came in as a request to make sure that city employees and, and those that were working in the departments had some additional layers of protection for them. There are reasons why this is an added layer of protection above and beyond what's in state law. When you're looking at state law, several types of harassment situations, specifically when you're dealing with city officers, especially those that work in the, serving the public. Typically, conduct towards them may not be considered a crime. It may be considered a violation. Or it may, officers may be hesitant to get involved in those situations. This would allow for city employees and city officers that are experiencing threatening behaviors or conduct from the public that interfere with their duties to be able to at least call on law enforcement and perhaps even use it as a basis for an order of protection if, if the conduct rises to that level. So that's the basis for the law.
Any questions from council members? So we'll be right along. Any, oh, there's, there's some council members.
I'd like to remind you something. You remember at the parking committee?
Yes.
We discussed about having some monetary contribution of developers towards the parking of our city. Or remember we said that? And maybe Crystal can look into it. You said?
Yeah, we can. Crystal, the idea is, actually, I'll call you tomorrow and go over the, President Stewart.
Sounds good.
Thank you. We have a, from the public, Ronald. Oh, I'm sorry. Ron, question?
Right. Yeah, I'm, I was wondering if there were going to be questions from the public allowed. At the legal committee meeting, I did raise questions about how this law, which was adapted from an Albany law, as I understand it, but expanded in scope, would reflect on freedom of speech. And I asked that, I, I was told that there are democratic, you know, protections already existing in the law to protect speech. And I asked that these be incorporated into the draft of this law and it be explicit about the law not applying to speech in public forums or in print. And I'm very disappointed to see that that hasn't been done. Matt McGee would also like to say something.
Yes, I, I would like to know.
Sorry, sorry, Ronald. Chris, could you walk us through why you chose not to do that?
So there are a variety of protections for free speech that are written into both the constitution and case law coming from both the federal level and the state level. These are generally, a law cannot discriminate based on the content of speech. There are some limited exceptions to that, such as hate speech. But a law on its face cannot discriminate on the content of speech. So this law doesn't. And then beyond that, the next question would be, is the law being unconstitutionally applied? There's a lot of case law on this, on the subject. And it is a case by case, circumstance by circumstance analysis. It is not something that would be appropriate to necessarily write into the law because it is very much a case by case scenario for how these laws are applied. And that was the reason why additional language was not included in here because those protections are already afforded at the federal and state case law levels.
The mic is on. Go ahead.
Matt would like to say something.
Yes, this is Matt McGee. As I understand it, the city council and other public bodies, which have meetings and hearings, would be covered by this as officers in the city. Is that correct?
All officers of the city would be covered by this.
Okay, then I will read what I've written about this. Primarily including the city council and bodies with public meetings and hearings. And this proposal can undermine liberties by inhibiting speech. Abridging rights through fear of punishment will be a violation of the constitution. Violations of the First Amendment by abridging the freedom of speech of the press and of the right of the people to petition government for regress of grievances. As well as Amendment 14, Section 1, no state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction equal protection of the laws. And importantly, there are issues with Article 1, Section 9. No bill of attainder shall be passed. Attainer can currently be construed as denial of civil rights by way of punishment. This can involve one or more persons. All of these civil liberties protections likely are in danger of being abridged or denied under the proposed law. Just opening up the possibilities should be unacceptable. Article 6 states the constitution is the supreme law of the land and laws of any state to the contrary notwithstanding. We are at a great crossroads for our republic. Can constitutional guarantees given to the people? Can constitutional government long endure in this nation if we choose not to go out of our way to honor the constitution? The White House, Congress and Supreme Court are already given over to enemies of the constitution. Must Hudson take this wrong step away from responsible governance? Surely, there are already reasonable ways to respond to the issue at hand. Just saying because laws protecting speech are on the books makes everything okay doesn't cut it when the proposed law, on the face of it, is in opposition to the laws. And I would add, our civil liberties are a human right. This proposal should be tabled. Thank you.
If I may, I would just like to say one more thing. I think the law is drafted, still permits speech to be interpreted as interfering with the performance of an official's duties. I think this needs to be clarified. I think that we need more discussion on this issue. There might even be, it might even be a good idea to have a public hearing on it. I don't think the council should be voting on it at this time of year when everyone is preoccupied. You know, it's the holiday season. People are distracted. I think there needs to be more discussion of this. Thank you.
Ron, Ron, we won't be voting on it this year. It's a process and it won't be a hearing.
Okay, but I, I, I am grateful for that. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone? Say any other hands up. Motion to adjourn. Second, second, all those who voted, say goodbye to say hi.
Hi, hi.
Anyone opposed?